It's live.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to May 11, Voorheesville Board of Education Meeting. It's 7:00 A.M. and I'd love to call me in, Porter, please. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you. I'm looking at the board here, so according to this present right, Jim, Mr. Clappell is on phone calling. Okay, so, let's see. Let's start with, for the good of the letter, board discussion. Would anyone have any comments on board members?
Did you, Dana, did you want to mention the June 2nd planning that was planned for the seniors?
Sure, I hadn't planned on it, but I would just say that for the senior parents who are interested, there's a Facebook page, Voorheesville Blackbird Class of 2020, I think it is. And there's some information on there about some planning to decorate Hoteling Park and do some special things to make the month of June special for the seniors. So if you don't find the Facebook page, if you're not on Facebook, you can get in touch with Robert Whitman. He's been an absolute, like, he's been great about getting things organized and keeping people in the loop. Or Suzanne Hartman. Okay, thanks. Or me, I can point you to them.
I also sent out an email today on behalf of the group to all senior parents. So all senior parents should have received if the system is working correctly. Same information with Robert's email address so they could contact for more information.
Yeah, good, thanks. I know, I just, I do just want to say that we're working closely with the village to make sure that everything we do is very cautious, attentive to social distancing and liability issues. So there won't be like large groups gathering in the park, but the park's going to look great. And Robert has a system for making sure that everybody has a chance to, you know, get pictures in the gazebo or whatever they want to do, but still be mindful of social distancing and, you know, being healthy, staying healthy. But thanks.
Right.
Nice.
Any other board members? Okay, opportunity for the public to be heard. We had no emails from the public for this evening's meeting, but as always, any comments for meetings or questions, please email Jessica and we'll be happy to get back to you. So let's move to reports and presentations, and we have the superintendent's report, please.
Okay, I have about seven things. I'm going to try to go quickly on some and then more in-depth than others. I want to be quick on the construction update. If you go to the secondary complex, we are taking advantage of this situation. There's not great things that are happening right now, but we are going to maximize what we can during this time. So if you happen to go by the high school, we have started replacing the windows, starting early. Couple reasons for this. One, it's going to be able to help us make sure that we finish a capital project in time. And we can make sure that we get our aid as we need. It's very important at this time. But also, it will allow us to have, if in August, we need to get into the building and be able to plan and utilize the building in August, we'll have it. Otherwise, if we didn't start now, with July and August, the building would not be able to be occupied. So this is a good opportunity for us to get ahead and then also plan for the future. The windows look amazing. If you haven't had a chance to check them out, it really is just a phenomenal upgrade of what it was and very, very nice. Any questions on that? Perfect. I want to talk food drive. BSMB, BSMB is having a food drive on May 15th. They're looking at roughly, last time they did this in one place, it was 300, 350 people that went through. So it's, they're projecting a possibly large number. I know that the Voorheesville Coalition, all the different groups altogether have been really promoting this. Also, today I got a message from Dad Bingle, and they have 250 cloth masks at their donut to the food drive as well. So they'll be able to give off cloth masks that were made by the senior center. So I think just overall, really nice part of the community. I'm glad that the school could be a part of it. Um, so Cuomo just announced that low-risk activities can start being started on Monday. So Francis and myself and Joe are talking already, and we're looking at possibly opening up tennis court and the track now, since low-risk things are now being opened, and tennis was one of them. So hopefully, starting on Monday, we'll be able to have the track reopen for community members. And same with the tennis courts, playgrounds. I don't think we're going to be able to open those at this time. I'm waiting for more clarification. But I don't think we have the proper way to be able to keep everybody safe and social distance apart and sanitized. So no, I don't think that's going to be able to happen. But at least the tennis courts and track will be able to be utilized by the community. Um, as we talked about graduation, I think it's important to discuss graduation and ceremonies altogether. The building administration are finding ways to be able to honor all of our students and still do some of the same ceremonies that they have. You know, the moving up ceremonies and all the different types of stuff and the awards and all the different things that kids would typically have. The building administrators are working on plans to be able to support that along with the advisors and clubs to be able to make sure that they're supporting our students. That is going to be going out shortly as they work through and start finalizing some of these events. I even know that there is a talent show, a teacher talent show. I don't know if that's been publicized yet. But around May 22nd, I believe, you're going to see about 10 teachers and staff members perform for the community and kids. And the other thing is graduation. There is a commencement committee of students. And along with that, it's the senior advisors, myself, Mrs. Schmitz and Mr. Sapienza. We've all discussed different options and different things that we can do. I think it's important to note, though, that I called CDC and Department of Health, and I asked if we have a gathering of 91 students and 10 staff members, and we livestreamed the rest of it, could I do that? And it was very clear, no, not at this time. You still, large gatherings are banned, and so we're really, so if, you know, you can have large gatherings, those are the different options. The commencement group is looking and giving feedback. We have a bunch of different options that we've discussed. The kids are amazing, and, you know, they really focused in on not only themselves, which was unbelievable during this time, but these kids actually focused in on the community. And they said that graduation is not only for them, it's for everybody who helped them get through. And I was like blown away by the selflessness of these students. You know, they are looking, and we're discussing a possible pushback for July, push that graduation back so maybe we have more time to be able to develop a nicer program. Other kids are going to give me more feedback. But I was just blown away by the fact that this is happening to them, and all they thought about was the community. So hats off to all their families and parents for raising such amazing children. So that's really it with that one. I'm going quick. If there's anything, please stop me, but just trying to get through them all. The school calendar, there was an executive order tonight that came out that Governor Cuomo kind of clarified a little bit more that schools can follow the 180-day calendar along with their contract. So I have to go through and look and make sure and see where our contract aligns with 180 days and the school year is itself. As you know, we lost break. We didn't have break. We didn't have Good Friday. Those are contractual days off, so we have to look at those and account for them. There's a good possibility we'll be taking the school year calendar and just pushing it back to those days that we've missed. So then you're going to be off by like a week and a half, two weeks. I'm hoping by Wednesday or Thursday, I'll have a final date that I can say this is the date that it's going to look like. Any questions so far? I'm going quick, so I apologize. All right. And I did that. I did that. Okay. So the other thing I wanted to discuss is grading. This has been one that has been a large discussion for quite some time. And, you know, we've had it as a region. We've been discussing it within the House and in school. We discussed it in a committee once. Like, there's a lot of different things along with grading and go-through. Here is what we're looking at, and this is very similar to other, some other school districts in the area. Some actually very large school districts in the area. So I want to share a slideshow of just a little bits and pieces. It's a condensed version that I'm going to share with you. Karen Conroy is actually making a slideshow that involves probably 20 slides, and she's going to do video commentary over top of it. So that way, she's actually going to have it for parents to utilize. So parents can go on and they can actually hear Karen walk through it and explain it. So, you know, just be a little bit more engaged. We're just trying to find different ways to be able to interact, since it's hard to interact nowadays. Let me see if I can do this correctly. Sorry. Give me one second. There it is. Okay. Can everybody see it?
Yes.
All right. And this is the wrong slide. I'm sorry. I apologize. That was not the right one. Let me try that one more time. See what happens when I prepare and not, and prepare, over-prepare. Does anyone have any questions so I can stall for a moment as I do this?
I'll just give my shout-out now that I was going to give during opportunity for the board to be here to say thank you to everybody who's trying to mark the milestones of our students, because I feel like it's not just the seniors, and I have a senior, so of course, I'm really sensitive to that. But, you know, eighth grade graduation, kindergarten graduation, all those milestones are so important to kids, and I'm just really appreciate that people are trying to figure out how to mark them remotely. So, thanks.
Anyone else I still have? Like, I just got to find this one.
Throw him a bone.
Come on, anybody, help me stall here. Hold it there. This is what happens.
Yeah, where's Dan Chase?
Okay. Now I have it. Let me try this one more time. See, technology isn't a grand. Can you everybody see it?
Yeah.
That's the one I wanted. The other one was, the other one that I had up was the one for the parents. They had a lot more slides. This is a very condensed version just for us right now. Some of the slides are redundant based on what we talked about last time, but we felt it was important to put them all together, so it showed a continuous understanding of what we're doing.
So Frank, I can't see it, but I can't see anybody, so I'm going to log out and log right back in. You just keep going, okay? I think it's a glitch on my end. Thanks.
So again, we're just going to go quickly over quarter four, Evidence of Learning and Not Yet Learned. That's what we're utilizing for quarter four. We're not doing grades. There's an inequity allowing us to be able to do grades. We can't guarantee that each student is getting the same understanding at home or being able to have the same opportunities at home that every other child does. So grading is an issue. So we're having complete and incomplete of standards. One of the most important things we've been discussing is how, and this is more for secondary elementary schools, already a standard-based report card, so it really fits well into what we're already doing in comparison to the secondary, which was all numeric. And it isn't based on standards, it's more based on content and standards, so a little bit different. So final course credit for students, and now you have to remember, if you get credit, you've automatically been exempted for the region's exam as well. Final course credit will be awarded to students who have a combination of passing averages from quarters one, two, and three, and satisfactory completion of fourth quarter. So we're going to take a combination of those four things together to be able to give credit to that student for the year. Student transcripts, though, on the other hand, will include the numeric grade for the full-year courses. I'm going to explain how that's worked out. And then spring semester will have half-year courses, but they'll be recorded as pass/fail. You have a spring half-year course, March 13th, you were six weeks in. And then you have a numeric grade for that, but then all of a sudden, all the rest of it is incomplete/complete. You can't give a numeric grade for that. So that's why those will be done as pass/fail. Any questions on final course credit and awarding of course credit?
No.
Karen's going to walk everyone through this as well. So final course grades. We went back and forth on this, and we didn't want to diminish any of the work that has been done by our students and, you know, throughout the year. I think it's very important. We discussed that quarter three was going to have a numeric grade, and GPAs for seniors are already based on, you know, the first three quarters. So this all aligns into what our policies are currently. Quarter one, two, and quarter three have been completed and will provide the numeric grades for final course grades. Again, they're getting a course grade, a combination, be able to get credit, but you'll still get a course grade. If quarter three was given an incomplete, students were given an opportunity to resubmit and submit late work up until March 13th, all the way to June 1st. So we've given students a large amount of time to be able to get past work in to make sure that quarter three can get up to a passing grade. Any question on final course grades? Okay. And final course grade for GPA, the numeric average of quarters one, two, and three will be counted. The satisfactory completion of fourth quarter will be counted towards a student's grade point average and class ranking. So all of that together will be linked in, so quarters one, two, and three, that will count towards a GPA. Spring semester half-year courses will not be included in GPA or ranking because they are pass/fail. That is the nuts and bolts. Rachel?
Um, how is completion or not completion considered? Like, every week I can check whether things are completed or not completed, you know, complete or incomplete. If a kid has not completed one thing, or how is that gauged?
Yes, it's based on, so the teachers are actually working through this, and each teacher is developing a rubric of their own to be able to develop this. First off, complete or incomplete is based on the work that is given and assessed by the standard. So the teacher will decide, you know, did a child get a non-complete the first time? Because maybe they missed a couple standards or didn't get a master your understanding of that standard, they're going to go back and ask that child to do it again. And then they're going to look at it, and if the child got complete, then they'll mark a complete for that work. That's why you're, the work for the quarter. The teacher got it, and it's going to be majority-based. So, you know, if you have a majority of completes, and the teacher can say through this understanding, I have this child mastered the understanding of all the content that I've given, then they'll award a complete for it. If the teacher can look at it and say, you know what, this child has not mastered the content that I've given, nor have they met the standard, then they're going to give them an incomplete for the full fourth quarter.
So if they have a couple of incomplete tasks, but on the whole have mastered and completed everything?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not a one-size-fits-all type of idea, because let's say you're an English teacher, and you've given five large assignments, right? But those assignments going back and forth, back and forth, and you're fatiguing and you're moving it forward, you might have three complete, two incomplete, because the child just hasn't gotten to the finalization of it. So the teacher would say, nope, they've gotten the full understanding of the standards that I was assessing, therefore, they have a complete.
Right. Okay, so it's case by case, but primarily a majority complete.
Correct.
Majority of tasks are completed.
Yep.
Okay.
Frank, you might have said this, but is this model pretty much universally followed throughout the BOSIs?
Um, no. So every school is different, dependent on community and different places. I will tell you that I know a larger school district, one of the largest in the area, is using this model. Some schools are using this model, and they're saying that you can also take a pass/fail instead of a grade. Um, there's a lot of issues that we walk through with that one, especially when it comes to GPA or rankings or any of the other issues that come along with it. And, you know, giving an option for someone to take a pass/fail instead of a numeric grade will, um, will have a larger impact on transcript as well. So we were a little hesitant to move forward in that. Some schools are doing pass/fail across the board, and they're getting rid of numeric grades completely, not even including grade quarters one and two. So this one is, this one is one that's basically a mix of the two major ones that are out there, this and another one which just pass/fail, like, pass/fail and numeric grade together.
Would you say this one's a little more rigorous?
I would say this one meets the needs of our district because of the fact that our kids have met the quality. They've worked hard quarters one, two, and three. They push themselves to numeric grades. I don't want to give them the idea that they work very hard, and all of a sudden, those grades that they push for don't matter. You know, I think it's important that we give credit to our students for the work that they've done and not discount those past, even though the year is not what we wanted it to be. There is flexibility, you know, in this with the fourth quarter to be able to earn credit and get the mastery and understanding if a child was deficient prior.
If, if a student has...
Thank you.
You know, sorry, Tim. If a student has a 90 average, let's just say for quarters one, two, and three, but then they end up with an incomplete in the fourth quarter, does that mean that they still have to complete that fourth quarter? And if so, what is their timeline for doing that? They don't finish it by the typical school year end?
So it's a compromise of those grades that is going to be able to award credit at the end. And you're not going to be, you're not going to have a negative impact of fourth quarter on your GPA. So if they have a 90 and they receive an incomplete, they're not going to have a negative impact of the GPA, and they'll have the timeframe of the last day of school to be able to get the work done.
Like, June whateverth?
Yes, just as they would on a normal school day. So if, you know, it's ended on June 26th, a child would have to June 26th to be able to get the work done. So it's very...
Okay. And if they don't, though, let's say it's English for 10th grade, then can they go to English for 11th grade or no? Do they get an incomplete for the year?
Yeah, again, if they got a 90 for three quarters, and the fourth quarter was an incomplete, they still have a 90 for the course, and they'll be able to move forward and get credit.
Okay. Interesting. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Frank, I assume that with this model, that teachers, especially younger kids, will be adding a lot of the helpful comments in the comment section. I think the narrative there on their monitoring their child's progress or recommendations will be extremely helpful.
Yeah, our major concern is that we don't want the fourth quarter to negatively impact students to the point, but we also want them to be accountable for the work that they've done. Um, so it's a hard balance, because again, you're talking about equity, and you do not know what's happening in a house. You might have one family where, you know, their father stays home, and he's able to do the work with the child. You might have a family where you have two essential workers, and it's very difficult for them to do the work. You might have a family where the child, the 17-year-old, is the only one that currently has a job, and is, and is the breadwinner. And we have to understand that each home has a different, a different viewpoint than we would understand. And it's very hard to be able to make one statement that fits all of that. But we feel like this one, with the teacher's help and the understanding of our work, this one does fit the need that we have. Any questions? Okay, so that is it before we move to the budget presentation. So I went through those pretty quick.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Presentation, next on our agenda.
All right. Um, so before I start this, and I'm going to present, so bear with me again, but I think I have this one ready to go. Um, I want to preface that there's a lot of things going on out there regarding our budget. And not only our budget, but in state in general, you know, there's a lot of doom and gloom. There's a lot of negative things that are going on. We have to look at all of this together and understand that we're not only talking about 2021, but we're talking about 21, 22, 22, 23, and the future. This year, you know, our budget is our budget, and we're currently in the 1920 approved school year. We're looking at approving 2021, but every decision that we make and everything that we're doing, it's actually impacting the next year as well, and really heavily impacting the next year about program and what we can offer and not offer. So as we're going through this, I just wanted to put that in a frame that it's not only now, but it really is the next two years that we're looking at. And every decision we make from this point forward will impact what we do in the next couple of years. So with that, I will now present. Move forward. All right, that one actually worked. All right. So Francis and I are going to tag-team this one, and I know that you guys probably, it's like Groundhog's Day, because we've actually done more project presentations than we typically would since we started the original. So we are going to go a little bit faster in ones that we've done, like probably seven times. But if there's anything that you want us to slow down and rediscuss with you, please stop us. But we just said that since we've done some of this so many times, we're going to skim over some of it a little bit quicker. So Francis, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. So our first slide is just a rehash of the tax cap. Tax cap, we're looking to go out to the maximum levy of 3.139, which is going to generate a little over $570,000. This was submitted to the comptroller on March 1st, which is required by law. Next slide, please. This is the, this is the, where we really want to spend a little bit of time today. You know, we realize, you know, 3.139, it's a number we're not used to seeing as far as a percentage on the levy. And what we really want to talk about is the growth factor. And Voorheesville Central School District has the highest growth rate in the capital region. And that's important because it's growing the tax base, which is an oddity for a community like ours, because we don't have a lot of commercial properties. You're seeing a lot of home value come into Voorheesville Central School District. This particular chart shows the true property values on the left from 2016, 17 up to present. And in it, you can kind of see the comparison to, so in 2016, 17, we were at, you know, 871. And, yeah, thank you. So if we look at the, at the tax rates of the 16, 17, whoop, there it is, at 16, 17, this is per true value, $1,000 per true value. You can see Burn, Gilderlin, and New Scotland, and the tax rates that they're at. The value has increased quite a bit over the last two years in the school district, some due to the reassessment of Gilderlin and the equalization rate going back up to 100%, which was important for the folks in Gilderlin that actually compressed and brought their, their tax rate back down to something sensible, which you can actually see in the chart on the right-hand side. So in 16, 17, they were paying $22 per thousand, and now they're down to $17.89 per thousand. It's very similar to with, with New Scotland, has only gone up about, you know, six or seven cents as well over the last four, four tax cycles. So when we're talking about going out to 3.139 on the levy, we also know that a great many homes have been put on the tax rolls. And so the true property value is going to increase again quite a bit. There's a, we know this through communications with the assessors in Gilderlin and in New Scotland. And we also know through how many, you know, our registrar, Mr. Rivenzio, is seeing new homes, new addresses coming up. So we know that they're on the tax rolls as well. So that's, that's a key component that, you know, we're fortunate that we are one of the few growing districts in, not just in, in value and property value, but also in enrollment as well. A great many of our neighbors are starting to shrink. So is any, before I move on to the next slide, does anybody have any questions on the growth factor and the importance and the impact that that's going to have on the, on the taxes?
Francis, I don't have a question so much on that, although at some point, the growth factor is going to, you know, become a space issue in schools. That's another question altogether. My, my one thought is, on the right-hand side, the, if I remember correctly, the revaluation of homes really affects the tax rate. So the change to Gilderlin's thousand, you know, their tax rate per $1,000 of home value, their homes were recently revalued, which affects their tax rate. And the period of time, you know, the change in your, your home's value and the way you're taxed on it, those are kind of linked, right? So if something's not being revalued, so, you know, if your house is revalued, your, your tax rate might look like it's a lot lower, but your house is worth a lot more. So your taxes kind of stay the same, because it's just your house doubled in, in value, but your tax rate went in half.
It can. It can.
Right, so, so, something like that could have happened.
It can, that can happen. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. If you put a, you know, a $200,000 addition on to your house, your house has grown in value. You're also going to see, you know, that you're going to owe more money on that.
Right, but if your house hasn't changed, and it's, like, if the, all houses get reassessed as they have sometimes done, that can change the way that they're valued.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. Next slide, please. So just quickly on the levy percentages and how much revenue can be raised. 1% brings a... Uh, one percent brings us about a hundred and eighty one thousand dollars. Um, two percent, three hundred sixty three thousand. And change and, and three percent, five hundred forty five thousand and change. Um. Next slide. Okay, uh, revenues. So Voorisville has two main sources of revenues, which we've talked about. Their tax levy, which we're looking at going out at three point one three nine. Um, and state aid, state aid, um. We're about six point five million dollars is what we're getting, expected to get in state aid off of the legislative budget, but. Caveat to that, there's talk now that uh, there could be pullbacks on state aid and it would most likely be. On the foundation aid side and that the expense based aids should still flow freely. Um, so I think the next slide, please. So the governor has talked about having state aid look backs. Um, and quarterly look backs, um, that can potentially affect our aid. The first look back would be in um, our final fourth quarter and the state's first quarter because they don't run. Um, synchronous to one another. The. Final fourth quarter, we um. We could lose upwards of two hundred thousand dollars. Um, we won't know in for a couple more weeks what that's going to look like. The budget was built already with um. Expected losses for the fourth quarter in revenue. Uh, so it's not going to have an impact moving forward if we wind up, it doesn't pull the money back. And then it's, it's a, it's a bonus for us.
Um, I just want to say like, we're looking at something here like, and there are some of our own colleagues and other school districts that are in a much different place than we are. And if some of that is all dependent on a few different things. One, we're very lucky that we have the growth. All the growth that we have is going to help us have a minimal impact of the increase. Um, the other thing is, you know, this is the first time that I'll say also being a resident. Um, is that, you know, we are lucky that the majority of our funds come from taxpayers. Because at this point, if we have a ten percent cut. From what we're looking at, uh, from our foundation aid, it's six hundred thousand dollars. If we're a school district that's eighty percent reliant on foundation aid, you're looking at millions of dollars cuts. So, you know, there is, eh, there's a wide variety there of different issues. And um, you know, we'll, we will be able to utilize some savings that we've had this year to be able to offset some of that cost of fund balance. And anything we have will, will carry over to be able to impact the tax levy next year or be able to keep program with any other potential cuts that are going to come our way. Um, it's very important to note that, you know, there's been quote unquote. States of, you know, round cut back look backs for the remainder of the year and next year. And we could lose up to twenty percent of our foundation aid. Um, and that's why it's so important for us to be able to maximize what we have now. We've already cut, the past few years, we cut, you know, last year was definitely a hard year to cut. We don't want to cut any more program, you know, if we're cutting program, we're going to, our students are going to lose out. And you know, we're in a hard time, but we're in a very good time because of the growth and what we have going for us. So we're, 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 we're very fortunate in that regard. Any questions on, on that?
Okay, so. In building the budget, we know that we've got a zero increase in foundation aid. Our foundation aid was, was three million five hundred ninety five thousand two hundred eighty eight dollars. Um, our expense based aid, these are aids that were used, using and then getting money back from OSI's. Building aid, transportation aid, high cost special education aid. We are told that those expense based aids will flow freely, so we're um, rather, rather confident that the uh, the, the two point nine million. Will be what we're going to receive. The state aid look back, as I said, there's a potential of a ten percent pullback. Um, we would be looking at a three hundred, approximately a three hundred fifty nine thousand dollar loss in revenue. Um, that we are expecting to get. Um, our budget's built on the expectation that we would um, get the foundation aid. That's uh, on top, there was a three point five uh, million dollars, so almost three point six, so. Loss in that, in that, um, and that begins to eat away at monies that we're going to carry forward. As Frank had said, um, if I can have the next slide, please.
And, and I think it's important to say that this is the first look back, that we could have a ten percent. There's more look backs to come.
Yes.
There is a good potential that with, you know, there could be mid-year cuts. Uh, and mid, mid-year deductions of even more foundation aid. So that's why we're trying to really preface all of this. And the other thing I want to state is, if you notice, the one thing we do have control over is our expense based aids. If anything that we can put into shared services or anything like that. Um, that will be able to at least have us project what we're getting for the years to come. So we put it in for nineteen twenty, we're guaranteed to be able to build aid for twenty twenty one, when we might be having decreased aid and foundation. So it's very important for twenty twenty one that we do the same thing. We maximize our shared services and expense based aid, so we can go forward in twenty one, twenty two.
So again, this is a, a slide that we've shown before. This is just our major categories of spending in the budget. Um, your general support, uh, instruction is the biggest of the, them, transportation. Transportation's gone up, we have uh, first time we've had to have, since I've been here, a private contractor. Um, transport one of our students, and we also shifted um, salaries around. When Mike Goyer's position was split up, his uh, his salary was, some of it was booked in. He was considered director of facilities as well, so it was booked in the uh, operations side of things as well as transportation. As Frank alluded to, our transportation, um. Uh. We've getting more aid back because our supervisor position, which was Mike's position, is now a BOSI, BOSI's shared service position. So we're going to generate more aid back than um, we would have through just the transportation aid. So that's another um, source of revenue that we're, to make that, that position more cost effective for the district moving forward. Um, employee benefits, five point three percent. Um, debt service is going down a little bit. Um, again, as we said um, earlier in, in, in the meeting. Um, how Frank had, had talked about, we want to get this capital project done. And the final cost support, final cost reports submitted um, into state education department so we can begin to generate aid. Um, in the following school year on the capital project, that's going to be important. Um, that also helps with our tax, uh, tax cap. Uh, calculation as well. Um, so our total expenditures are going up two point four percent. Um, change from budget to budget of uh, six hundred sixteen thousand eight hundred eighty three dollars. The next slide is um. Basic pie graph of how that's all broken up. Um, administrative costs, capital, and then program. So, program being seventy eight percent of the entire budget. The next one. So. As we're getting ready and discussing, you know, voting and getting closer to that time. Um, there's always, what happens if um, the boat goes down? Typically, you would have the time to get a second boat out. I don't know whether there would be any time to get a second boat out. Uh, because we're doing this so late in June ninth and July one is the beginning of our fiscal year. So, um, if, if voters uh, shoot down a budget. We would go into what's called a contingency budget, when the, the contingency budget and the impact that that has. So in a contingency budget, the levy remains the same. So your levy stays the same as it is for this year. So. As we talked about earlier, we're looking at a, increasing the levy, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. If we went to a contingency budget, we would lose that projected revenue. So you would, you would be losing your projected revenue of five hundred seventy thousand dollars combined with the potential. Of a ten percent pullback on our foundation aid. And all of the sudden, we're looking at a loss in revenue of, you know, over nine hundred thousand dollars. That is a significant, significant amount of money for a district our size.
And that, that loss of revenue is only for the first look back? So not to doom and gloom, but I want to just, I want to put it all out there so we all are aware. If there, if that were to happen and then we were going to, for a second look back, we could be looking at over a million dollars in lost revenue. Any questions?
So again, the budget facts, uh, we're looking to increase um. The budget, six hundred sixteen thousand eight hundred eighty three dollars, which is a two point four two eight percent. Which is actually down from the previous year. Taxes, the tax levy, uh, we'd like to levy uh, an additional five hundred and seventy thousand dollars on the levy. And our state aid increase as of April first um, was thirty seven thousand three hundred forty four dollars. And that is the money that we're getting back from the emergency project. Um, in the small gym where we had the ceiling issue in the small gym, so that when you do an under a hundred thousand dollar emergency project, you get the building aid back the following year. One of the other components of the budget uh, boat will be a bus proposition. Basically, we have a multi-year plan for replacing school buses. Uh, we keep our buses between ten and twelve years. Um, the plan is to purchase one large sixty five passenger bus and then two more of the twenty eight passenger buses. Um, the total bus proposition is uh, two hundred thirty six thousand dollars. Uh, we auction off our used buses. And uh, we're, we're getting about sixty percent of that back uh, for transportation aid.
So next steps, um, I just want to talk about the vote really quick. As you know, the vote is now June ninth. The district has just proofed our, our postcard to go out next week. Um, postcard's going to state that any, anybody who's a qualified voter, eighteen years old, resident of the community, um, can vote. We are going to send out absentee ballots that are with prepaid postage. Um, on it, so those ballots will go out. People will get them, they'll sign them and they'll send them right back to us. Um, they have to be back by June ninth at five o'clock. Um, we're going to have prepaid postage. If a community member does not get them by June third, and it will stay clearly on the card, to contact the district office. Um, to be able to do that, we're utilizing our voter registration. And our poll registration list and we're cross referencing to get as many people as humanly possible on that list. Um, and we will be sending those out. I do want to state that we're using BOSI services for this because it is a cost. Um, it's about, you know, it's very expensive to print a ballot and also postage for it. Um, all of that which we are doing is, is aid available for expense based aid. So I, I do talk the talk and walk the walk. When I say if we can maximize our funds. We're going to utilize the expenditure and then also use that for next year and be able to increase aid based off of that. Um, but those are going out soon and people will start seeing those. And that's the same thing with the uh, the three BOE trustee positions, they will also be on the absentee ballot. Francis, you can finish.
Uh, yep, so it's the, as Frank said, the budget, so on the ballot, you'll be voting for the budget, you'll be voting for the bus proposition. And then finally, there are three open um, board trustee positions that will be uh, voted on as well. That's all.
Okay, any questions from board members?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Uh, Frank, has there been any conversation among the superintendents? Or business officials, Francis, regarding a contingency budget vote date if necessary?
So I heard, this is horrible, I heard June thirtieth. Um, I don't know how that's humanly possible to do that in the same way. Um, it's just, I, it's mind boggling. So right now I heard June thirtieth, I think it would end up being later than that. So we would be voting on a budget that we were currently using, and that's just different than I've ever been used to.
Has Voorisville ever lost a budget?
Oof. Jim?
Jim? He's on mute.
Yeah. Well, I. It hasn't.
Not in the least. Tell you that much.
Good, good. Uh, I am curious to know uh, how many candidates are on the ballot? I know that write-ins are still possible, but how many candidates have declared? Can anybody tell me?
I don't have the answer to that.
Currently, there are four candidates that have declared.
Four, okay. Good.
And we'll, we'll post our bios on the, the um, the website in the near future.
Good.
Okay, the initial ballot, uh, the initial postcard that you're talking about mailing out. That's a postcard letting everyone know about the upcoming election, correct?
Yes.
And are a lot of the seniors going to be eligible to vote? Their birthday have to be eighteen by the second of June or something?
Yeah, so i- if you turn eighteen on. You know, June seventh, guess what? You can vote on June eighth, you can vote on June ninth. So you have to be eighteen at the day of the vote. That's all it says for a qualified voter. So it's a little bit different than we're used to. Um, I've already offered to go into the senior classes and discuss this with the kids. Um, you know, eh, eh, and for some students, it's a rite of passage. I heard somebody tell me recently that. They're a su- they, they, they're a superintendent in another school district and their daughter was going to turn eighteen and they were going to do a selfie. In the, in the voting booth to say that she's actually, you know, the student's exercising their right to be able to vote. Um, it's a big thing for, for people to be able to exer- exercise their right to do so.
Yeah, um. Oh, I was just going to say, so you, you mentioned that if you haven't gotten your ballot by June third. Then you should contact Jess back. And if you haven't voted, let's say in the last few years, maybe should you get in touch with her?
So, yeah.
I don't want, I don't want to overload her, Jess, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's good. So we got the voter registration for Albany County. That's the first list that we have. And then we also have the poll registration list from the past few years, so we're going through. Uh, every school district is going to be different and we're trying our best to be able to get every voter, but you might miss somebody. So, you know, if somebody feels that they haven't voted or they haven't registered and they want to make sure they get a ballot, please email us now. And, and contact Jess so we can put you on the list. Um, June third is the deadline for us because it gives us enough time to be able to still get that ballot out. And then get enough time for it to get it back.
Okay, but there's nowhere you can go and look to see if you're on the voter list.
So Albany, it's, it's a very convoluted um. Way that we, we have a voter registration list that's there, but we do poll registration. So the thing is, is that. Anybody who lives in our community can come, show the ID and they can register. So since we do poll registration, it doesn't matter if you're a registered voter in the county. Because you still could just come and register to vote when you're there. So we have to use two lists to make sure that we're getting everybody. Um, it, there's no, there's no one right way to do this. Everybody's really struggling to make sure that we're trying to get it as best we can. The number one thing we can say to people is, when in doubt, just email us, please. You know, if you voted last year, you're going to get one, you know, there's a, there's a great chance. If you voted two years ago, yes. If you're registered in Albany County, you're going to get one. Um, hopefully, but you never know. And honestly, you never know what the may have. So. If you don't get it by. Call, if you're turning eighteen on June first or June seventh, call and we'll send you one so you can return it on, you know, you can return it to us.
Thank you.
No, it's a great question.
Yeah, this, it's important for people to be able to vote.
Um, this is not an easy thing and eh, eh, we're, we, there's a lot of discussion to get to this point. Um, but we're, we're finally, we're moving through and we have a list and we have our timeframes and we're being able to do it.
Thank you. I know it's a, on top of everything, it's like here, here, run an election totally differently than you've ever done it before. And quickly, two please, thank you, good luck. Thank you for doing it though. Thank you and, and thanks Jess and all the other folks who are involved in that.
Okay, and thank you for the presentation, Francis. And Frank, any other questions from board members? Okay, then we shall move on and. Four point oh approval of minutes, may have a motion to approve the minutes of the last regular meeting.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second. All in favor? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Okay, move on to. Thank you. Okay, move on to action items. I'm going to choose five point one tracker for five point four. Request. Could everyone take a look at them, please, and let me know if you have any questions or clarification that we need before we vote? Okay. And may I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Cindy?
Yes.
I want to state that Jim is muted. So his, his vote isn't being casted.
Oh. Okay.
I, I'm going to mute myself for a minute and try to call Mr. Coffin really quickly.
Okay. We'll wait for you.
If Jim can hear me, if he pushes star six, that will unmute on the phone. So star six unmutes on the phone. So I can hang up Mr. Coffin and then he can log back in again and we can see if that would work. If that's all right for the board. Or Jim, I. Sorry, I noticed. I just wanted to make sure that we were counting that appropriately.
Okay. We just removed from the meeting, so.
I think we worked it out, Mr. Coffin. We'll call him back in in about 30 seconds.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, so perhaps we'll give it a couple more minutes.
Jim's on.
All right, I'm here.
All right. All right. Jim, were you able to hear when we were voting on the two items?
Yeah.
Okay. We were all in favor. Are you in favor?
I, I am in favor.
Okay. So thank you very much. So board will move on with our next item, please. And that would be, that, that will be group these. These are 5.5 to 5.7. And these are the changes in the athletic program for basketball and addition of modified foul that Mr. Cappiano went over in detail. There were no public questions on that. And does the board have any additional questions since our discussion on that?
Nope.
Okay. Well, then, may I have a motion to move 5.?
I'll move it.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Getting it on. So now we are on to 5.9, action on resolution. Oh.
And do we have to do 5.8 in there?
Yeah, I just, that's backing it up now. Thank you. 5.8 and let's use that, let's do that by itself. Approval of extracurricular club. Can I have a motion on that?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. 5.9, action on resolution, appointing personnel for school, library, budget, vote, and election. May I motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
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 All right. Excellent. Thank you. Moving on to old business. I'm going to ask the chair to the committee. I believe each committee did meet remotely virtually since our last meeting. So if chair could give us an update, and if you have the next committee meeting date available, please let us know that. And if we can start with order, with Rachel, chair, please?
Yeah. Our last meeting preceded the meeting, the previous board meeting. So we have not had another audit committee meeting since then. I believe the next one is June 8th. So that would be our next scheduled meeting. And it would be immediately preceding the, the board meeting.
Thank you very much, Rachel. Collecting committee chair Diana?
Sure. We met on April 21st. We had two big agenda items, the NISED graduation and course requirement changes because of COVID-19. And we had a discussion and Karen did a presentation about instruction and grading during the school closure and how to prioritize standards, you know, as we move into more instructional work for students. So the presentation was much the same as what Frank shared with us earlier today. Our next meeting is May 18th at noon.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Diana.
Welcome.
And next to Southern Committee Chair, Rob, please.
Uh, yeah. So we had a capital project update. They're currently doing work in the LGI, putting up the ceiling tiles and, and sound panels. It looked really cool, that purple and gold look. The boiler room, we talked about which should have been done soon. Said hoping by May 15th, so hopefully soon, soon. Frank mentioned the window work that's, that's starting at the beginning of the meeting. That's going on too. We also talked about doing another demographic study due to the recent growth in the district, repeating the one, I think it was 2016, we did the last one. Talked a little bit about traffic safety. I guess we'd had some conversations with the Department of Transportation to do a traffic study on 85A. They didn't find anything alarming, not a lot of speeders. And they passed along radar measurements to the sheriff. Our next step is going to be to investigate whether or not we, there's a possibility to do a sidewalk or a crosswalk there. I'm talking town on that. We've, we also talked about radon and found a whole bunch of old, very interesting documents about radon testing previously done in the elementary school back in the 90s. A couple of the rooms had slightly elevated levels, but nothing that required renovation at the time. And what else? Water testing for lead. We'll be doing lead testing again sometime before the end of June. And there was a pretty cool forum on electric buses at the end of April that I think Rachel attended. I haven't had a chance to watch the replay yet, but they do have a replay out there.
Yeah.
So.
It's, I, I'll talk to you about it. There's a, there's some interesting infrastructure that could be quite costly depending on the size of the bus and the bus's needs. And there's a lot of technology that goes along with it. But it, it's definitely something we could think about going down the road, but we need to build in the infrastructure and work very closely with our utilities provider.
Yeah. And seeing what, you know, it varies. I think what they provide in terms of incentives for putting in that infrastructure. At one point in time, they're doing it almost for free. As an aside, there's some other interesting things using buses as power banks, right? For, for flexing the grid. So instead of using peaker plants, you have all those buses that are plugged in and charged and you can use those to.
But, but if you don't.
So benefits the utility.
Right. But if you don't work with utilities, then you end up just.
Yeah, exactly.
Right. So.
I was on that as well. And the one thing they were saying is, it looks more feasible in five years with technology and costs and, and the development of buses. It kind of like, they were saying it's great, but in five years, it's going to be more commonplace. It was very, very interesting. And thank you for sharing that.
Cool. And I think that's all I had for facilities.
Do you know your next meeting?
Say that again?
Do you know your next meeting date?
Ooh, I, I gotta look at my calendar. Francis, do you know when it is?
Isn't it Wednesday?
This Wednesday, right? Isn't, is it?
This Wednesday at 10?
That sounds right. Yep. I guess it is right. All right.
No, it's this Thursday at 10.
Thursday at 10?
Thursday at 10. Okay.
That's what I have.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Rob.
Okay.
All right. Thanks.
Policy and governance, policy, sorry, policy. We have Jim, please, chair?
So we met on April 29th. We talked about the grading policy, mostly as related to regions. I know Frank, obviously, we did a, we just discussed all the grading, but we're going to follow the BOSI's guidance on the grading in the regions. So we'll keep using that. We started a discussion on bringing therapy dogs back. So we just started. We pulled a few different policies that we're looking at right now. So that's very exciting. Jess is also taking on a big project where we're looking at all the NISP policies that we have to annually review. So we're going to start identifying those. And our next meeting is Tuesday, May 19th at 7:30 a.m. So any questions?
No, thank you very much. And Jess, perhaps because there were so many changes in, in meetings, just because of how we're having our meetings virtually, if we could maybe get those dates posted on the website so that everyone's aware of when their next meetings are. Thank you. Okay, opportunity for board to be here?
So I just meant to say this at item 5.8, when we approved the D and D club, which I think we had already approved the D and D club. And I know now we're just approved a stipend for the advisors. And I know that Mr. Sheehan and Mr. Simons both volunteered their time for over a year to get that club off the ground. And I think they've done an amazing job and they brought in a lot of students. And I really appreciate their, their work to get that club going. So thank you.
Any other board members? Okay. To remember, we have June 1st, the budget hearing, regular board meeting, June 8th, and budget vote, but, but board section, June 9th. So.
Was there any information about when the ballots themselves would be sent out?
So we're still working through that because you got to remember, post office, we're working with the vendor, we're, we're going through the whole thing. So we're doing our best. I don't have a timeframe. We do know that people could have them by June 3rd. I don't know exactly when they're going to be going out though, because again, it's undertaking and it's not only us that's doing it, it's every district in the area. So the post office is going to be your swamp with.
There is a post office. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, Jess.
Could you get, tell me again what's happening on June 1st? That's the budget hearing?
Yes.
Yes, correct.
What time is that?
7:00 p.m.
Say that again?
7:00 p.m.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So any, if there's no other comments, may I have a motion to turn?
I'll move it.
Second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Hi, guys. Good evening.
All right.
Thank you.